Roll call.
Councilmember McCorkle, Mayor Merritt.
Yep.
Dernigan.
Here.
Poe.
Here.
Longbreak.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we will recess the city council meeting and convene a joint council NPUA meeting. Call to order. Public comments pertaining to the executive session items. A three-minute time limit per person has been established.
Do we have any public comments?
On the line is, you all from you?
Yeah, she's there, yes.
Hello, Ms. Simmons, did you want to make a public comment regarding the executive session items? Are you, are you here for the six o'clock meeting? Can you hear me? She on mute?
I don't have her muted.
Hello, Ms. Simmons? Well, we attempted, and if she does have a comment, she can do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll recess to executive session. Do I read all these?
I, I, I'll go over them just briefly. Item A is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Needles versus Jones. And item B is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, City of Needles versus Kalia Scroggins. Case number listed in the agenda. Item C, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Needles versus Jonathan and Linda Rivera. And the case number is listed in the agenda. And then D is conference with legal counsel regarding potential initiation of litigation pursuant to government code, section 5495, 6.9D4. And that involves one potential case. And item E is the same as item D, same, same description. And then F is NPUA and council, conference with legal counsel regarding potential initiation of litigation pursuant to government code, section 5495, 6.9D4, one potential case. That's it. That's where it's at.
Well, thank you for coming to the Needles City Council meeting. We'll convene with executive, executive session report by city attorney.
The council met in closed session. Item A was conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, in Ray City of Needles versus Jean E. Jones at all regarding 1202 West Broadway. And there was no reportable action on item A. Item B was conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, in Ray City of Needles versus Kalia Scroggins. And there was no reportable action on that item, and that related to 1921 Rio Vista. Item C was conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. And that was in Ray City of Needles versus Jonathan and Linda Rivera. And there was no reportable action on that item. Item D was conference with legal counsel regarding potential initiation of litigation pursuant to government code, section 5495, 6.9D4, one potential case. There was reportable action taken on that item. There was a motion to initiate a receivership action in San Bernardino County Court against the River Valley Inn. The motion was made by Councilmember Campbell, the second by Councilmember McCorkle. And the vote was Councilmember Belt in favor, Councilmember Longbreak in favor, Councilmember Campbell in favor, Councilmember Merritt in favor, Councilmember Pogue in favor, and Councilmember Corkle in favor. The next item was item E, conference with legal counsel regarding potential initiation of litigation pursuant to government code, section 5495, 6.9D4. And there was no reportable action on that item. And then F was NPUA council, closed session, conference with legal counsel regarding potential initiation of litigation pursuant to government code, section 5495, 6.9D4, one potential case. And there was no reportable action taken at tonight's meeting. And that concludes my report out in closed session.
Thank you. Roll call was already previously taken. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation.
Stop.
As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask that all cell phones be turned off or set in their silent mode. Thank you. Public appearance. Persons wishing to address the city council, Needles Public Utility Authority on subjects other than those scheduled are requested to do so at this time. When called by the mayor, please announce your name, address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established by municipal code, section 2-18. Amendments to the California Government Code, section 54950 prohibits the city council from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda. Public comments pertaining to the NPUA council items, a three-minute time limit per person has been established. NPUA council consent calendar. All men, all matters listed. Oh, okay, sorry. Is that Leslie Simmons? Okay.
No, no.
Oh, okay, sorry, Judy. Redmeyer. Yes. No. I know. I'm on a mission.
She's in a hurry. I'm Judy Thornton, 1835 South Drive, Mojave Valley. I'm from Needles Tourism right now. We had our second info fair on Saturday at the Algarve. It was very successful. We added presentations this year. They were well received. We've already set the date for February 10th, 2024. We will add a craft fair in the park and an art show in the West End for next year. We also want to thank fashionable events and full-blown events who donated to us two huge screens, two projectors and all of the sound equipment and all the cords that go with it. So we will be able to use that at our events. We have the rail cams. We're hoping that within a month or so, they've been programmed, that we can get those mounted. And we met with the people a couple of weeks ago, and so that's really exciting. We hope to get those up. And lastly, now I'm Needles, Needles Rodeo. Our, our grand marshal this year is going to be Dr. Ed Page. And he happens to be here today. Very, he's been.
Congratulations. Been here? When'd you come, when did you come here? With the Mayflower.
Yeah, he came about the same time I did. And he has been very supportive of the rodeo. He's been very supportive of the community. He has served the city. He has countless athletic events where he has been the medical person there. So we think that this is a well-deserved honor, and we're very happy to be able to have him this year. Thanks.
Congratulations. Thank you, Judy. Okay. Is that, okay, Jared.
Jared Johnson, 1320 Santa Fe Circle. Haven't seen you guys yet because we're doing kid stuff and stuff in the evening. Wanted to bring up two lights that need to be fixed. Good. Casa Linda in Lily Hill. That area is high speed thoroughfare. There's a crosswalk there that doesn't have flashy signs, dimly lit. Now the light is out there. So for a lot of kids in that community using that crosswalk, it's important, and everybody flies up and down that street. Also, catty corner to that off of Larchwood, that one's out. So as you come into that housing development with a lot of kids in those three streets, there's no lights there. That's important to get those fixed. Also, if you haven't noticed, your off-ramps are being started. Miss Belt has been working on, has started. So please give extra time for those contractors moving back and forth, doing their things. Or you will have to use five-mile road. You will have to plan on using J Street. They are moving to J Street, so you're going to have to plan on that being closed also. So you're going to be finding a lot of ways to get around. Also, Caltrans crews will be out there working sometimes with them, sometimes around them. So just plan your trips accordingly. Also, we are also closing the bridge from the Colorado River. So if you're coming from Havasu or Topock, you will be down the one lane. We did it all last week. We're going to be doing it all next week and probably so on and so forth until the contractor is happy with the work that they're doing up there. So you will be down the one lane up there too. So if you're coming from Havasu or Topock, you know, plan your trip accordingly. We are utilizing CHP to shut down the freeway when we start and stop, so there is a backup in the morning. So just letting you guys know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie?
Wasn't sure if I was supposed to speak now or when we do the housing thing, but I'll speak now. I'm Julie Bigum. I'm representing the Needles Housing Authority. Address is 908 Sycamore Drive. Mr. Daniels wrote in the paper that he had invited us to, he had some, to present our accomplishments. And I sent an email to him asking him, what accomplishments are you looking for? And these are the responses that he went back and forth with me. So one was that he had, he had asked us for a stack of items that the council had asked for. And my response, because he came to my desk and, and I told him that I didn't have time. And I'm one person, and I'm doing the best that I can. I have been the executive director since December 1st. I don't have a staff. I have one part-time worker, and she is busy getting the, the tenants' files all straight, getting the applications all straight, getting our waitlist all straight, and working the front area. So I don't have a staff to make copies and stuff, everything. It isn't because I didn't want to share this information or I'm trying to hide anything, but I'm one person. He asked, Mr. Daniels asked about if we have provided, let's see, if we have provided a report to the city clerk for activities from the previous year, and that he has never received any of those. I worked for the housing authority in the 90s. I never heard of such reports. And so I do not know if any reports have ever been filed as far as the accomplishments from the previous year. He asked, how many clients, how many clients NHA serves with first-time home buying assistance, developer financing for new housing rentals and vouchers? State and federal agencies have made hundreds of millions of housing assistance available for grants in the last year. The housing authority, the City of Needles, runs two programs, a 52-unit low-income housing complex, and we administer 23 Section 8 certificates. How many, how many, question? How many funding requests the NHA filed for new housing programs for rehabilitating existing owner-occupied housing stock? The answer is none. We just have the two programs. Clients that are assisted, he asked if clients that are assisted by NHA who are seniors or veterans and their status. 14% of the public housing tenants are elderly. 1% of them are veterans. 29% of our Section 8, our voucher program participants are elderly. Please stop.
Just three minutes.
Huh? Sorry, stop? Okay, I have a whole lot marked, but.
Madam Mayor, just to clarify for the record, I think the speaker's comments were directed at item number.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, correct? Is that correct? Okay. Just want to make that clear, it's related to the housing item that's on the agenda. But, you know, at this time, we're doing just general public comments on items that are not on the agenda.
Yeah.
We'll.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you. NPA, NPUA and council consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The mayor, any member of the NPUA city council may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to NPUA council action, a member of the public may address the NPUA city council on matters scheduled on the consent calendar. Three-minute time limit per person applies. Recommended action, approve items one through three on the consent calendar by affirmative roll call vote. Number one, award the bid to Phillips Excavating, Inc. for the installation portion of the water meter replacement project in the amount of $561,306, plus 10% contingency for a total project cost of $617,437. And authorize the staff to execute the public works agreement with Phillips Excavating, Inc. and move forward with the notice of award and notice to proceed. Number two, approve the task number six with Petrelli Electric to replace poles and alley between Coronado and Balboa under the electric circuit rehabilitation program to compete with the electric system improvements at a cost not to exceed $202,000 using funds from the electric system asset replacement fund. Number three, approve installation of streetlights on the east side of Clary Drive in the amount of $16,192.36 using electric asset replacement funds or include the streetlights in the ADP project scope for the west side. What? Okay, number three.
Hi, I'm Janice Mauer. I was born and raised here. I live at 1501 Lily Hill in the apartments. I asked Joanne, Ms. Poe, to, to ask to have the streetlights put on the agenda because it's dark on that street. And I've been kind of doing a tally of people walking at night up and down, including kids under 10. And it's about 10 to 15 people each night. And so for their safety and for them walking, because people do drive fast, they turn that corner like it's a racetrack. And we always go, oh, there's going to be an accident or someone's going to get hit. So just out of safety, I just wanted to see if we can get streetlights on Clary Drive.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any comments for staff?
No, the staff reports on those matter.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Any discussion from council? No. Okay.
I just have one question regarding number three. Obviously, the request was to approve, but I think we have a choice whether to just have the electric asset replacement fund or include it. So how should we vote on that individually or?
Yes. And the mayor, Councilor Poe, it would be to have the asset replacement fund. Provide funding, that's $16,000. And we will add two streetlights up that, that stretch. Now, on the west side of the street, there's a site. On the east side, we're doing the booster station. And we can look at including the light project as part of that and the sidewalk grant that we received for $1.2 million. So the recommendation is to go ahead and do it from one of those sources, either the grant or directly from the asset replacement. The recommendation is to do what you requested.
Ron, I would like to move that we approve the consent calendar and go with the replacement project for number three.
We'll call in for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Mayor Dernigan?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longbreak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, regular items. Number 17, regarding the resolution number 2023-12, authorizing the city council to assume the governing body responsibilities for the Needles Housing Authority.
We're moving it to the.
Yeah.
Excuse me. Madam Mayor, members of the council. The Needles Housing Authority was formed in the, in the late 40s for the purpose of providing a, providing affordable housing for Needles residents up on Bailey and J Street. And they also provide, as Julie mentioned, housing vouchers for folks. Affordable housing in this community is critical to this community's economic prosperity. The lack of affordable housing has caused over 450 people that work in Needles to have to find housing across the river in Arizona. If we had those people living here, that'd be about 1,500 to 2,000 people more in our population, which makes us more attractive to retail developers such as a grocery store or such as additional restaurants and the like. So housing is, is critical to the city. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and California Housing Community Development Department have made billions of dollars available for housing programs. And we need aggressive rentsmanship, much like we saw as we pursued over $30 million of other infrastructure in this community that's going to be done this next year. The median household income in San Bernardino County is $87,000. The median household income at Needles is $42,000. Yet, the feds define moderate-income families as less than $104,000 for a family of four, which means that nearly every one of our households in this community could qualify for some form of housing assistance, whether it be a senior-centered housing project, whether it be a veterans' housing project, whether it would be a first-time home buyers where there are grants available to allow young families, they would get fronted the money for the down payment, and then that would be tagged at the very end of their mortgage, 20, 30 years, 15 years, whatever. So it's a way to stimulate new housing. Other programs that the federal and state agencies provide for are assistance to developers to build housing, whether they be standard housing, single-family, whether it be duplexes, triplexes, or apartments. All of those work. The deputy director of the LA Field Office of Housing and Urban Development notified the city and the housing authority that as of November 17th, the housing authority will be listed as a troubled agency, which means that continued federal funding is highly questionable. The state law does require the Needles Housing Authority to make an annual report to the city on their accomplishments. Julie started to do so, and I hope she'll finish that up. In the 10 years I've been here, there hasn't been one report, except for Julie's efforts tonight. While the city has made great strides in setting housing policy and adopting the housing element of our general plan, remember a report that Patrick gave you a while back that the city is one of only two jurisdictions in San Bernardino County that has fully complied with the housing element of requirements of state law. Much of this council's credit. So I've provided to you this packet of information, which are supplemental to tonight. Southern California News Group did a scoring of housing implementation to add housing in different communities across Southern California, actually across the state. They rate Needles as a D minus. D is adult. D minus. And they score us a D in very low-income housing, an F in low-income housing, a C in moderate-income housing. Now, remember, that's $104,000 a year for a family four or less. And a D for above moderate-income housing that's coming up short. Also provided you with a news article which explains the housing expectations and how each city's doing. I've also provided you with a letter I got received today that, from Needles Housing Authority Chairperson Darla Walters resigning from the housing authority. It's clear that if the council approves the resolution that it has before us tonight, it will appoint itself as the housing authority governing board. You would become the Board of Commissioners of the Needles Housing Authority. And it would function much the same as you do with the Needles Public Utility Board. All matters will be brought to this meeting. It would be a separate section of the agenda which would deal with housing issues. And then in time, let's say the next 30 days, it'd be my recommendation that you look to appoint a housing advisory board of folks that have an interest in housing and that could advise you and review grant proposals before they come to you. You, they could look at the condition of the housing that's up there on Bailey and, and J Street. They could take on a variety of different matters. It's clear that beginning very soon, we're going to need a staff person in City Hall that, that is a housing specialist that can function as the property manager for those, that she said 52 units up there at J Bailey that can administer the housing vouchers and can be a grant person. I've also provided you with an article that there are lawsuits filed in the Bay Area against cities that are not doing their state responsible housing authority activities. So we run the risk by not having an aggressive housing authority of, of being subject to citizen lawsuits. My conclusion, I want to preface this by saying I've only known Julie Bigum for two months, maybe three. Julie was given an impossible job. She has worked her fingers to the bone. I admire that she even took it on. But she doesn't have the support necessary to get things done. So what we've done is I've assigned Barbara DeLeo, our staff accountant, to work with her and help her in meeting the fact that there haven't been financial statements prepared for the housing authority in a couple of years. Therefore, there have been no annual audits of their expenditures and their revenues in two years. There were two years, nearly two years, where they didn't have a board meeting. So, but it is not Julie's fault. Julie has been a, a great asset to try and, and dig the housing authority out of quite a deep hole that they put themselves in. a deep hole that they put themselves in. But my conclusion to you is that the housing authority is not functioning properly, nor is it been in at least a decade. Economic development needs of business, businesses and residents are, are not being met. There is so much to do, and my recommendation is to, for the council to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three days twelve, which would declare the city council to be the commissioner, Board of Commissioners of the housing authority, that to direct staff to develop a subsequent ordinance, uh, for the creation of a housing advisory committee similar to the Planning Commission or the Parks Commission or the Utility Board, uh, that the mayor and vice mayor, uh, would be the chair and, and vice chair of the authority, much the same way that their chair and vice chair of the Needles Public Utility Board. And last, that, uh, you declare that city manager, uh, is delegated all authority necessary to implement the resolution, including, uh, continuing to provide support for, uh, Julie and her efforts, uh, but also, uh, to bring there the resources of the financial personnel and labor matters, uh, and report regularly to the council on the transition of that, of the housing authority to be governed by this city council. Now, the reason I'm recommending that there's a, the Housing Advisory Board or Commission is that there's a requirement that, at some point in the process, that residents, at least two residents, be appointed to a body that they can bring residents and cus, uh, housing authority customer concerns to the attention of eventually the housing authority board of directors. Uh, that would do that. The second would be to help sort out a whole host of significant improvements that need to be done, plus have sorting grants that, that are available and help identify which ones that we should aggressively pursue, veterans, seniors, first-time homebuyers, uh, other ways to get housing built. That's a, that's all. A lot to be said, but I, I want to make sure that everybody in this audience and on the dais understands that Julie did not create this problem. She has been a, a large part of the solution, and I want to commend her for her efforts in a very difficult, difficult situation. Uh, if that happens, I'd be glad to answer your questions.
Counsel, have any questions for staff?
Yeah.
Um, would it, us taking this over, um, because you've had, I believe, a couple of conversations with Mr. Rhodes, HUD?
Yes.
Would this kind of smooth some of this?
Please?
Oh, sorry. Um, would this, um, kind of lower some of the repercussions that we could be facing with HUD?
Well, I, I did ask, uh, Mr. Rhodes, then, in, um, actually at the suggestion of the housing authority, uh, I contacted Mr. Rhodes, uh, probably in July. And at the time, he suggested they're in trouble. They are not functioning. They have, do not have, um, they're, they're making some progress, but they are, um, they're in quite a deep hole. Two years of not meeting with the board, two years of no audits, two years of no financial statements. And at that time, he suggested the city should consider taking the housing authority under its wing. And I'd probably had ten conversations with Mr. Rhodes since. Most recent was Friday, and that, and I asked him, if we pass, if the council passes this resolution, and tomorrow, the housing authority is part of the city, much like the Needles Public Utility Board, would that be able to stave off the troubled agency stats? And he said, no. But it would show within a short period of time that these problems were being aggressively addressed and could be that troubled agency designation could be removed. At that point, federal funds begin to flow again, but, and it's really been because of Julie's efforts, uh, to, um, do the heavy lifting up there right now, uh, that kind of puts us in that position. Uh, I believe that the city assuming it is the only way that the housing authority survives. And we need that housing full.
We do.
Any other questions?
Mayor Dernigan?
Mayor Dernigan, I'm sorry. This is Lena Wade. I'm the Deputy City Attorney. Um, and I was just wondering if I can perhaps, um, chime in as well?
Sure.
I've been assisting this city, um, with the analysis of the issues before regarding the housing authority. And as you are aware, um, and, and as Mr. Daniels has shared, since the authority was founded, the city council has appointed residents to the Board of Commissioners. The housing authority's law is state law, and it was amended in nineteen sixty-eight to allow that the city council at any time may declare itself to be the Board of Commissioners. And so that is what is before you. And Mr. Daniels was correct in stating that the law does require that two people who are recipients of the housing authority's aid, uh, one being at least sixty-two years of age, must also either be on the Board of Commissioners or on the housing commission that Mr. Daniels referred to. Now, if this body decides to declare itself to be the Board of Commissioners, um, the staff and I will work to put together an ordinance creating the housing commission, um, so that there would be two, um, two resident participants at least, um, and others who would advise the city council on matters involving the housing authority. Now, with respect to the troubled agency designation, a housing authority must get at least sixty points on what's called the public housing assessment score. Um, and if you get at least sixty points, that housing authority would not be troubled. The Needles Housing Authority has received, um, a score of forty-three points, so it will be designated a troubled housing authority. Um, what that means is that HUD will provide the housing authority with one month to enter into what's called a memorandum of agreement that will set forth the steps that should be taken to get out of that conundrum. And so the housing authority will have one year to get halfway to sixty points. So, they're going to have one year until the next time the public housing assessment score is determined, to try to reach that sixty, um, point, or at least halfway to that sixty-point threshold. Now, if the housing authority doesn't make, um, sufficient progress and doesn't reach sixty points within two years, HUD at that point could take over the housing authority or have a receiver appointed to run the housing authority. And so it seems as though the city, um, staff is prepared to make the effort with Ms. Bingham, um, as the executive director, to, you know, reach that sixty-point threshold. And a lot of it has to do with the fact that certain reports were not, um, timely submitted to HUD. So, that is the process. And, um, again, if this board chooses to declare itself to be the housing authority, um, the, the staff and I would review current documents such as the bylaws, um, and other things, um, you know, that, uh, involve the housing authority and bring them to this board, um, to determine whether or not amendments or changes thereto would be made. So, that's the status, and that is why actually, um, there is a recommendation that a chair and vice chair be appointed at this time in order for there to be continuity and for the authority to be able to execute documents, um, primarily with HUD, that memorandum of agreement that I discussed. Um, there would be people in place to do that on behalf of this, of this board. So, um, that is all I have to add, and if there's any questions, um, I'd be happy to entertain them as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll, oh, tell her.
Who, um, who is the board made up of?
The current board?
We have, no, no, no. When, if we take this over, two residents have to be on. How many, how many members are on this board, and who are they made up?
So, this body, the city council, would be the governing, uh, the board of, board of commissioners.
Okay.
So, you are the final set.
Okay.
What we would do would be to create a housing advisory board or housing commission, and at that point, it would be whatever number, whether it be five or seven, but you have to have at least two that are customers of the housing authority, and one of those has to be over sixty-five.
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two. Well, being seventy, that's, those are young people. But, um, those, so on the housing commission, maybe you would appoint, uh, do a call for appointments or people of interest, and then, uh, and then appoint two that are housing authority customers, and then maybe five others that, uh, that you believe have the aptitude and interest, uh, to, um,
Reserve it.
Be proactive in housing, in pursuing housing.
Lena, can I ask one more? What, what, Lena, what were you meaning that we need to appoint somebody tonight?
Right, that's part of the resolution. So, a, a chair and vice chair of the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. So, what we included in the proposed resolution was that the mayor would be the chair, and the vice mayor would be the vice chair for the time being, um, just so there's continuity and we could move forward and get this memorandum of agreement signed with HUD. Um, i- i- and that is for that purpose.
And then, and then they would be, and then you go and elect another one like the, um, like the, um, other commissions we have, correct? Any of them would be exactly the same.
And they would be, you would adopt rules for the housing commission, but they would be advisories in the first level of review before housing issues came to the city.
For the MP UA governing board, we have the utilities.
And the planning commission.
The planning commission, well, yes.
It's, it's, uh, it's consistent with the structure of other components of the city government.
Thank you.
I, um, in doing that and having the mayor and the vice mayor be the chair and the vice chair, it's important because we, the city council, would be the ones taking over, and they run our meeting here. There, that's who runs our meeting, and this is going to be a carryover, so they carry over and they run that meeting. So, it's important to have, that's the continuity that we have to have, is that they are running the meeting and that we're conducting business fluidly. So, we get this ball rolling until we iron out everything, which just keeps it going in that direction.
Okay.
Just my understanding.
Thank you. We'll open it for public comment. We'll let Julie finish where she, no, go ahead and finish your first, Julie, so you can finish.
Do I need to say Julie Bigum, Needles Housing Authority? I know, wait, second more. Um, I do need to clear up, um, something Mr. Daniels said. Um, the housing, um, our housing board has been meeting regular. I, I don't know, they, they missed a few meetings through twenty twenty, you know, when COVID was going on, and they had the meetings over the, with the TV. And, um, but they, they met pretty regular, so that's, I, I'm not sure where that come, come from. And then, um, again, I have not built houses or any of those type of grants. We've only done the housing, public housing here, and HUD requires that we, um, minister to, um, that we have forty percent of our families in the extremely low income range. And the extremely low income range runs, um, for a family of four, um, they have a yearly income of twenty-seven thousand, seven fifty. Now, that's forty percent, so just to kind of keep that in mind, um, people making over a hundred thousand, they wouldn't qualify for public housing at all, or for a Section Eight voucher. We are in trouble. It's not official yet. It's going that way. Needles Housing Authority has always been a high performer, so I don't see it being a difficult thing to get it back into that status. One of the big things is the audits, and one of the things that brought it down into a troubled, on the verge of troubled, it's not there yet, but pretty darn close, is, um, unaudits weren't performed. And I'm working on those, and that's all, the term unaudit is even foreign to me. I'm like, what? I have to do what? So, I am working on that, and hopefully I get the two unaudits in by this month, you know, and that will bring the status up, so I'm told by Mr. Rhodes. Okay? Um, the, our physical condition, um, one of the things that makes our, our project look really bad is because we turned off the water, so there's no grass, the trees died. We have a project, a current project going on, um, where every, all the units are going to be getting new windows. And if anybody's driven by my office, you'll notice there's new windows on the office. Hallelujah! And, but, um, and that was thanks to, um, Mr. Daniels, putting me in connection with blah, 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 you know, and I could get those windows. Um, I'm hoping to get the windows done, and, and that is all in place right now. It's just a matter of going through the steps, and I also want to include, um, doors if I can. And then my next project is new roofs, stucco landscaping. And that, that's my plans, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I plan to make it a good, good housing authority, good family.
It will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Honorable Mayor, members of city council, Barbara Beard, two thirteen Safari. Um, I emailed Rick before the meeting because I was concerned about this item and several others, and he just checked off and answered all of them, and this is the only one that I'm still concerned about. Um, Mr. Daniels indicated that he had run this by Mr. Pinkney. Uh, I see red flags here everywhere from, as an attorney, but that's not my job. My job is to try and convey those red flags, and, you know, you take Mr. Pinkney's advice, of course, but, um, I saw immediately a conflict of interest potential. You have a count, we're a charter city. You have a county board, a state board, and I believe there is also a federal HUD, okay? So, I don't know if the feds come in here at all, but I'm concerned about us being a city on our own, a chartered city, independent of all the codes that would, the laws that would go with serving as a board like this, okay? What you, what laws you would be subject to that you're no long, that you're not subject to at all yet. And, um, I don't know what those consequences are, and I don't know if you have to bow to whoever is in charge at the county level or the state level, but, uh, just please be aware of that, okay? I don't know if you're under the gun on when you have to do this. Julie sounds like she's, you know, she's come a long way to get this thing turned around, um, but I'm just really nervous about it. Thank you.
Yeah. Are there any more public comments? If not, this is closed, uh, for public comment. Call for the motion.
I'll ma, I'll move that we adopt this recommendation and become the governing board of the, the Board of Commissioners for the housing authority. Second.
Okay, we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McWhortle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longbrake?
Yes.
It, the MP UA council adopt the proposed revised MP UA budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. MP UA resolution oh-two dash fourteen dash two oh-two-three dash MP UA amending resolution oh-six dash fourteen twenty twenty-two dash MP UA staff report.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, um, staff has met with the, um, utility board and with, uh, utility managers. The budget stays the same except for we need to increase the legal budget by fifty thousand due to, excuse me, fifty thousand, due to the litigation that we're currently involved with, uh, with the Rio Buena Vista Homeowners Association, who claim that we're responsible for maintaining their private system. So, uh, there's really insignificant changes but for, uh, the increase in, in legal fees. Um, so there's really insignificant changes but for, uh, the increase in, in legal fees. On the revenue side, uh, we believe that, uh, that revenue will cover that additional fifty thousand expenditure. So really, uh, the recommendation would be to adopt the revised NPUA budget for the remainder of this fiscal year. Glad to answer any questions.
Counsel, have any questions?
Yeah. So Rick, it's gonna, where is this coming out of then? You're saying fifty thousand on top of additional fees? We've already, already projected for this next six months?
Right.
For a revenue, we're an additional?
What we've done is we're projecting an, an increase in the expenditures of fifty thousand. But based on the revenue flow date in the first part of the year, we believe that will be covered by the revenue projection between now and June thirty. So it's a wash. And if not, then we'll, we might cut some broken.
And it, because at this point, I mean, we're not asset replacement at all, having to use anything.
And I just wanted to add that this is a lawsuit, um, where the city was sued. These has no choice but to defend itself at this point. The city prevailed at trial and was awarded its attorney fees. And that's where it's at, right?
Thank you. And do we have any public comment on this agenda? If not, uh, pub, public comment will be closed. Recess the joint in, oh, sorry.
A little right.
Um, sorry, motion?
I move to approve.
I'll second it.
And the mayor.
The, the vote?
Council member Campbell.
Yes.
McCorkle.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Dragon.
Yes.
Poe.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longberry.
Yes.
Assess the joint NPUA council meeting and reconvene the council meeting. Public comments pertaining to the council items, a three-minute time limit per person has been established.
Chamber of Commerce update on visitor center? Oh, sorry.
Public comment.
Oh, sorry. Ruth.
Good evening. Ruth Besser Lopez, Needles, California, for almost forty-five years. It's great to see some new faces and congratulations, Jan. It's great to see you up there. And, uh, I just wanted to, um, say that I was at the planning commission meeting and I brought up the, uh, fact of the cemetery, being, uh, the Needles Pioneer Cemetery, the historic cemetery, the oversight and it not being included in public use on the map. And the planning commission and you all in the city did a great job in revising the map and it's, it's there now. And I appreciate that so much, um, that that didn't fall on deaf ears that, you know, you understand, you ran on that, the historic thing. So, but, um, I did, I only had three minutes at the planning commission and I did bring up something else. There's a parcel, uh, just south of the cemetery, the historic cemetery. And it is currently, um, being, uh, actually a spreading field for water coming out of the culvert that comes underneath the freeway. And it, it, uh, it, it is Lily Hill Wash. It's an extension of Lily Hill Wash, at least one segment of it. Part of Lily Hill Wash goes other directions, north and south, but this is pretty major. And the county took it upon themselves to put flood control there, um, which has worked really well for controlling the flood, uh, water, because only a little bit of water comes out as a, uh, in those culverts as opposed to everything gushing down, uh, downy and valley. So, but, um, it's obvious that the water, when it rains and if, uh, really heavy conditions that it floods down the street and, um, it storms the street quite a bit. But I'm just saying that that land there, um, is, uh, planned on the map for multi-family housing. And I'm requesting it be, uh, changed if you would consider, uh, changing that to open space because there is no open space in all the area east of the freeway to the river. There's nothing for the people, um, in that neighborhood, in that whole area. It's going to be congested too because it's, uh, slated for a lot of, uh, what's a red, um, getting nervous about the three minutes. Anyway, uh, I just think it needs to be open because the children play there. People walk their dogs there. It's, it's spreading ground. It's right by the cemetery. It's parking for the cemetery. It's just a small area and it's right next to the freeway. Uh, I'm just hoping that you'll take another look at that. Kids, they take little quads there and they run around. The children, it's just a perfect thing for, uh, open use. And it would be nice to have at least that much that, where it's nothing there. No tennis courts, no skate parks, just a little desert where people can walk their dogs and stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Orr, one nine seven, Green Tree Drive, Lake Havasu City. Chamber of Commerce update. First, congratulations to all new council members, Madam Mayor. So the Chamber of Commerce, we, we sponsored the, um, just lost my words. Sorry. Tillingford Car Show. And, uh, that was, we had a busy weekend in Needles. We had an info fair. We had a car show. We had a Super Bowl party. And then we had a Super Bowl. I'm sure everybody got to watch. So it was a good weekend for Needles. Um, as far as the chamber goes, we are basically a soft open for business. We're going to have official ribbon cutting on the twenty-first at noon. All of you are invited. Come get your picture taken. Um, February twenty-third, we're going to have a membership networking breakfast at the nineteenth hole golf course restaurant. Um, as you're all welcome to come as well. And on March eighteenth, we have our chamber golf tournament. And what, last but not least, we've had a new design, our new logo for the chamber. We've created something that encompasses the valley. Um, it has Needles Peaks. It has the river. It's kind of a new, modern looking logo and you'll see that in the, in the new visitor center. And that is my update. Did I go three minutes? No.
Yeah. Oh, we have a couple of questions.
Yeah. Well, you have all of that information in writing somewhere, all of the events that are coming up?
Yeah. It's, it's actually posted, but we, I can get that too.
On your website?
Mm-hmm. Well, not on a website. That, our website is built. It has not been activated. We have a new website. So we're in that transitional period. Um, just bear with us. We're working on it.
Okay.
Um, but it is on Facebook, I believe. But if you would like, I can prepare something and send it over.
Okay.
For everybody.
I'm on your Facebook page, so I'll watch for it. Thank you.
I have, I have a couple of questions. Have you, um, started paying your utilities and the rent to, um, the city yet or?
Honestly, Madam Mayor, I, I would have to, I would have to confirm that, but I believe we have.
Okay. And then, um, do you have a business plan, you know, for your, you know, your vision there in the visitor center to?
I'll be honest with you. I'm just trying to get us moved in.
Oh, okay.
Um, we are, for lack of better words, we're trying to transition from a board run chamber
Right.
to a director run chamber.
Okay.
Um, and that is, that transition is not going as smooth as I'd like it to. So we will be looking at that, but that is the bigger business plan, if you will, to have someone who runs the chamber. And the board meets once a month and agrees to do certain things of that nature. That is a traditional way to run a chamber. I belong to twenty-three chambers of commerce. I sit on the board at Redlands. So I'm trying to model this chamber after that.
Okay.
So that's, that's a pretty big business plan.
So then are, if they are paying, are we paying them then?
Uh, no, but as soon as they open, then we, they, they qualify under the agreement.
And then, can we?
Funding available and then they, they.
Okay. So then also are you, um, can we meet for getting a, um, health and welcome center?
That is, that is a, that is a goal. That is absolutely a goal. Um, right now we're trying to take baby steps. Trying to get a building open, get some pictures on, kind of thing. And I, I, I'm being
No, we get it.
brutally honest with you. Um, it is not, the current model of a board run chamber is not a good model. And I say that in open forum for a reason. I want to change that. I want to have a body there and another body there to help with the visitor center. So that's our biggest goal right now. I think once we do that, we'll see great things.
When we were arranging all of this, it was going to be visitor center first and then the chamber was also just going to run it. And I was seeing some of the signage and it says Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center. So it's kind of like the opposite of what we agreed to. So I just was wondering about that.
What the signage is going to be?
The signage, because the city is, you know, funding a part of it. So that was just part of my.
You're more than welcome to make suggestions.
Yeah.
So I stepped into this in a pro, in a halfway process. Um, and I wasn't involved in the contract. And I'm, I'm learning as I go. So I'm up for suggestions. So you, you guys, look, I'm, I'm just trying to serve the city of Needles. So tell me what you guys want. We'll do it. Sound good? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for everything.
Okay. Number six, general plan study session amending the city code and land use map associated with the general plan. Update and adoption of a mitigated negative declaration, initial study discussion.
So this is a briefing of the council on the first draft of the general plan. The planning commission had a similar, uh, briefing last week or week before, on three, two, four. And they begin the hearings process for adoption, uh, at their hearing, I believe tomorrow. So once they are done in dealing with issues such as, uh, this, uh, Mr. Lopez brought up, as those issues are resolved, then, and they have a, a plan ready to recommend, then we will schedule it for public hearing and adoption. And this will be the first update of the general plan since nineteen eighty-five. And I think lays out a good vision for how the city should develop. So I'll get out of the way. If ever we can, or consult, go draft at the point, uh, present.
Right. So I just want to point out two things. I want to point something out and then I want to introduce our, our teammate here. And so this is all grant funded. So all of this was funded by a grant. So it's very exciting for our community that this plan that, and yes, I was alive the last time we did this plan. Okay. All right. But, um, seriously though, I'd like to introduce to you Colin Drucker. He's with Place Works. As you are familiar, or if you're not familiar, they've done our last two housing elements. And so they're very familiar with the city. This started three years ago, uh, with them. And they've taken it over from the land, from the housing element to the land use, now our transportation element. So this is very exciting and I'll get out of the way. All right, Colin.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to try and, for anybody who is here on February first, you can hit your snooze button and, and wake up in twenty minutes. But I'm going to give, for those, uh, who haven't seen it, it's kind of just a, cut through how to read all of the documents that were given to you and for kind of disclosure for the public. So as, as Patrick said, you know, it's been since really nineteen eighty-five, nineteen eighty-six that the city's had its, its general plan. And obviously things get outdated. General plan law says actually nothing about exactly when you have to update it other than just, hey, it's a good idea when things get out of date. Um, the city's been running with zoning and running with its current general plan for a while, but it was timed to update it. The grant funding was there and a lot's changed in the last thirty-seven years. And I too was alive, although I was in a different state. Um, but the general pla, plan provides this high level guidance. So zoning really hits what you can do on the ground, exactly where your parking needs to be, things like that. General plan says, look, what type of city do we want to be? What are our land uses distributed throughout the city? What do we invest in? And it tells the, the public and the property owners and prospective investors, what do they invest in? What can they count on for direction? When decisions come before decision makers like this body here, what is the city's guidance and what is their direction going to be? Um, so it's, uh, normally, I, I think even the city even considered kind of a larger update. These are the two core elements that really drive the rest of the general plan. So the city was able to get all of this funding. Normally, uh, general plan updates run anywhere from five hundred thousand to one point five million. We were able to get, do this really efficient, um, and work with the city and staffs have been great. We did, uh, some outreach over the last couple of years, whether it's just kind of a fact sheet for those who are interested, talking with key stakeholders from various, uh, aspects of the community, having a couple of open houses. We finally got some kids to the, to the table, um, to really kind of bake in their ideas and what they were looking at. You know, we're looking for people who are hopefully going to be here for the next twenty, forty years, um, and looking at the downtown in particular. Uh, and then we have kind of the, the state mandated, uh, uh, notification and outreach. And then we also, uh, mailed out notifications to every single property owner just to, because we're making so many changes to the zoning map. So city's been relatively stable, uh, over the, the, the decades in terms of population. And what we're doing in the general plan is we're providing capacity for growth. Um, we're not trying to, uh, get the eyes bigger than the stomach. We're looking at the infrastructure, looking at what the city can accommodate. We ran the traffic model twice to make sure we understood what the city's roadways are today, whether or not they need to change and what the cost implications of that are. Uh, what are the, the implications for all of the other land uses? And, uh, as your city manager has pointed out, kind of what population tipping points might you need in order to attract certain businesses? So we're attracting or providing the capacity for more growth, including a sequoia document that provides some streamlining for future development that's consistent with the general plan without getting kind of too big. Um, so I'm going to run through the highlights of the land use goals. There's policies that go with this that, that implement and, and provide direction on these goals. But the first policy, or the first goal is really all about compatibility. The, the city has a really a big blend of land uses. And there's a lot of cities and especially smaller cities that are just residential. And the Needles really has the, the full spectrum of uses. And so that's something where we looked at what the pit, patterns are today and tried to make sure that we can ensure compatibility going in the future. It's also looking at having a diversified economy. Needles is on the upswing right now in terms of local economics. And we want to make sure that it does things that take advantage of the, the city's benefits and, and energy and water and leverage those to provide another base of, of growth for the city, multiple bases, so that you're not overly reliant on one industry or sector. And then most of the people just think of the general plan as the land use map. And that is, you know, that is the darling of the general plan. That is mostly what people look at. Um, and, uh, just before this project, it, state law allowed charter cities like, like Needles to have general plan and zoning maps that were different. Uh, that, a law changed in twenty eighteen that said, hey, everybody has to have them consistent, whether you're charter or general law city. So we took the two maps on the left and we merged them into one. Um, we kind of calmed down some, some of the color schemes, uh, made them a little bit more conventional, um, and then provided, uh, some corrections to see, okay, is the general plan the right direction here or is the zoning the right direction? So these were the, the legends on the left is what you, uh, have right now. Um, some of them, you know, we're, we're just trying to make it so that when you look at the map, you know, okay, some sort of color spectrum of yellow to brown. The intensity it increased means more units in general, uh, commercials always some sort of reddish color. You know, you've got your commercial residential resort. That's a mixture. And then you get your manufacturing uses and then open space and public facility. So hopefully improve some of the legibility and providing a single map system for the city will ensure that nobody gets confused. Nobody falls out of consistency, um, and everybody has clarity moving forward. We have, uh, created a map because we know, uh, there's a lot of changes, um, and they're, they're really, I'll go through the types of changes. Um, but for those who are receiving something in the mail that, you know, hey, your property might change. We wanted to provide some, something easy that they could look at so they could see, is my property being identified for change? So we created a, a map on the web, kind of works like Google Maps, um, but we isolated the parcels that are proposed for change. And then if you click on it, it tells you what's the existing zoning, what's the existing general plan and what's the proposed for in the future? It also tells you what's the existing land use. Um, we paid attention to that. Um, when you look at the types of changes we propose, all of them, and I mean, all of them were done really to refine the, the city's land use plan. We're not redefining the city. The city's patterns largely stay in place. We looked at existing land uses. We were trying to respect what's on the ground. So we didn't suddenly turn someone's property into something that they, they lost all of its value or lost of all other direction. Um, oh, the, the presentation was going off on its own there. Um, and then, uh, we had, uh, there were a hundred and thirty-nine parcels, you would say, that had existing single family homes, mobile homes, manufactured homes on them. That would be considered non-conforming uses, meaning the zoning doesn't allow single family. A hundred and eleven of them are already in the position right now. So we didn't do. So we didn't do anything with those 111. We created another 28, but they're in places where they're usually around industrial facilities, something where we say, okay, I realize this is residential, but we really don't want to see this going forward. But the city has a non-conforming clause in its zoning code that says, hey, you're a single family, live here as long as you want, you can make improvements up to 25% of the value. You know, there's some protections in there for people who want to live there and even kind of continue on. No active businesses were made non-conforming. There might be some buildings that are not occupied and not active that would be non-conforming if the use were actually in there. But otherwise, we were able to make sure we didn't create any inconsistencies for businesses. So out of the about 3,200 parcels in Needles, about half of them were just either no change or a name change only. Again, we're going to a two-map system, we just kind of synchronize all of the labels and the categories. About a quarter, a little bit over a quarter of them, where the zoning, say, is the same, and the general plan was the one that needed to change. And then about another 12, 10, 12% was the opposite. The general plan was the right call. And then we had about 400, really something like 396 parcels where, okay, the general plan and the zoning were off. In some cases, it was like, oh, open space was the designation, and industrial was the zoning. And so, no, it's residential, or something like that. But of those, that 12%, 7% was public or quasi-public ownership. This means City of Needles owns it. We talked with the City of Needles, they're off, you know, you guys know what you want to do with your property. Others, BNSF, we know, okay, it's railroad property, let's make sure it's good for them. And about 5%, about 170 parcels out of all the 3,200 were under private ownership, and we changed both the general plan and the zoning. We also added in and refined the land use categories, looked at the zoning, looked at the general plan, figured out what a good direction would be, and added in addition to density guidelines and standards for what you can do. What's called FAR, you know, floor area ratio, when you're doing non-residential, it's really looking at the massing. You can look at the graphic there on the bottom left, and it's looking at how much building space or floor area compared to the lot area are you building. So if, the real simple way to think of this is if it's an FAR of .5, your building space equals half of the square footage of the lot. Now, it could be one-story, it could be two-story, it could be three-story. So it's really about massing and scale. So when we're looking at neighborhood commercial, not only does the market generally not support really intense buildings in neighborhood commercial zones, because they're typically around single-family homes and just off the beaten path, we don't want them to be too intense. As we get towards the downtown or highway commercial, we can allow for a lot more intensity. They're usually near large roads, near other uses that are more compatible with higher intensity uses. The third land use goal is really about enhancing public access and use of the Colorado River, obviously a big staple for the city. And then looking at that downtown, hearing some of the events that were happening and will be happening and continuing to enhance the downtown and make this just a local, great local gathering place and a regional destination. And looking in the downtown in particular, we identified what we call a downtown core, where you really want to encourage and facilitate your higher density mixed-use development. Look at Broadway, and we looked at it from a traffic standpoint and ran the model, as I said a couple of times, to make sure we weren't just wishing from an ivory tower that Broadway would be, you know, a little bit narrower. So it's four lanes of traffic right now, very wide. We said, let's use that right-of-way, but do diagonal parking, still have two lanes of travel. You can close down that, you know, segments and have events and festivities, and increase the amount of parking. But we looked at the existing and future traffic volumes, and it just never rose to the level of ever really stressing the, even the two-lane configuration. In some cases, in downtowns, when we talk about level of service on a roadway, you know, how much congestion you have, A is free-flowing. Most people, when they're driving around a city, they want level of service A. They don't want to have to stop, waited stoplights or intersections. In a downtown, you kind of want to go towards that level of service, not necessarily F, but you want it to be busy. And you don't want people to be just blasting through to say, oh, look, I'm just traveling through here as a speedway. So this is where we're kind of proposing a redesign of Broadway to make it so it's more walkable, provides more parking, and slows traffic down, and gives people more opportunity to see the businesses and activities around there. So we are also proposing a change in the general commercial zoning, where we allow even greater intensity in this downtown core, so the FAR, the intensity goes up, in part respecting the existing parcel fabric that you have in the downtown. You just, you don't, you have buildings that are built towards the street, you don't have large parcels, you don't have the opportunity for them to spread out. And that's not what you really want in a downtown, anyway. Lowered the minimum bedroom sizes and allowed for the fact that there's parking really throughout the downtown, and you want that park-wants strategy and walk-around. So you don't need to have the same type of parking standards you do as you would around a grocery store, or something like, or, you know, a 99-cent store. Oh, that's right. Yes. I, no, no, I just hear the sound and I think, did I, did I do something wrong? Oh, could you put it to presentation? We're also in the downtown core, added the downtown core as an area where we are limiting cannabis-related activities. And then, a new thing since the, for all those who haven't been paying attention as I've been talking so far, a new thing since February 1st is that we talked with the state, it relates to your pro-housing designation application, and they said, hey, you need to tweak your density bonus provisions of the code. And this is, I don't know, changed like number 942 over the last five or six years. So we said, look, can we just streamline the city's provision so it references state code, and you don't have to worry about falling out of step? Keep the things that are unique to City of Needles and allowed by state law? And they said, that sounds great. So we looked at another jurisdiction who was doing it, modeled it after that. So that's been added and kind of bundled with all of this. You all have been doing a great job on improving the roadway systems, and that's one of the main goals for the transportation element component, is to make sure that there are kind of a safe and efficient roadway network for all of the vehicles that need to go through. So here's the roadway network. We've kind of updated and modernized the city's roadway diagram, and really what I was talking about earlier, right sizing the network. We looked at, our first take at the traffic model run was, what if no improvements were made? And by no improvements, I don't mean paving. I mean no widenings of the roads, of the right-of-way, you're not taking, you're buying people's property, not even necessarily adding any lanes. So what if the roadway network just lived with what it was? How would the system operate? And it was perfectly fine. So we said, okay, there's no reason to increase the amount of money the city may have to spend for roadway improvements that aren't necessary. But let's keep the right-of-way, so that if things change in the future, you know, hopefully the city grows substantially in a way that's healthy and safe for everyone, and then you maybe reach a tipping point, and one or two roads do have to be improved, or in terms of adding travel lanes. You still have the rights-of-way. We didn't do anything to the rights-of-way, but we changed the classifications so that it shows how much of the space is dedicated towards travel lanes, where we can appropriately get lanes for bicycle facilities, enhance pedestrian safety. So you see that we added in a multimodal loop, trying to connect different aspects of the city as it goes by major public facilities and connects neighborhoods. And then that K Street underpass reopening that. Getting to those people who walk and bike, and we talked with residents during some of the outreach, and there's a lot of little young residents who will ride their bike and walk, no matter what the temperature and no matter what the conditions. And we want to make sure that we enhance that safety. So what we did was provided a network. These are existing, the yellow are the existing and potentially future sidewalks. And then you have the green for where you have potential or existing trails. And then you have that blue multimodal loop where the design can kind of change to fit what's appropriate in the exact context, but to provide some enhanced pedestrian and bike facilities, while recognizing that the city does not have endless money to try and go make huge bicycle off-street trails. But there's, this also speaks to a state law which talks about complete streets. That does not mean every street needs to have pedestrian, bike, transit, car, truck, you know, facilities. It means that you need to look at your system holistically and make sure that people can get around, not necessarily on the same network, but on a complete network. And in transit, really just kind of recognizing what the city has, and then looking for opportunities to expand and enhance as feasible. On the truck routes, right now, the city operates primarily with areas where oversized vehicles are prohibited, whether it be in communication with BNSF or just a desirability standpoint. So what we wanted to do was formalize where the trucks really should go. Obviously, there's the state and federal law that prohibits the city from being able to say, you can't go to an existing business, but we can direct those who are not traveling to local businesses appropriately to stay on the freeway and travel along certain roads so that we discourage them from going through neighborhoods or other areas that wouldn't be appropriate. There was a SEQA done for this that looks at the proposed project, which is really kind of comes down to how much growth are we looking at? And ultimately, the decision or the determination was that there's really no impacts with the exception of zoning consistency, which through ultimately an action of updating the zoning code will be resolved. So nevertheless, we still worked with the city's environmental consultants to help distribute and finalize a mitigated neg deck. And the final one was posted a while ago and will be presented again with the Planning Commission and Council. So these were the, these are the dates, just so everyone stays aware. We met on the 1st and are loving all of each other today on the 14th. And then we'll be here, I'll be here again tomorrow night, and seeing the Planning Commission's direction there and pending that direction, then the idea is that we come back at the end of the month. So that ends my presentation. Obviously, I'm available for any questions, and anybody else, you can email Dawn.
You think you have questions?
I have a question.
So this will be, if this gets, okay, approved through Planning Commission, then it gets back approved through the, through us, then we are completely done with our general plan? OMG.
For the final year.
Wow. How long? That's been a...
We've already finished. One comment in there if I might. The comment that Ruth brought up has been addressed.
Oh, it has?
At least the designation on cemetery. And it's an oversight, I'm glad she caught it, but it's now designated as public facility.
Okay.
So, yeah, yeah. And then we're going to, we're going to look at the issues she raised about the end of Downey Street. I think that, we're going to look, we're going to look at that, about whether it's necessary to keep as a drainage recipient. So we're, we're working to resolve issues every time. And I, and violence credit, the community outreach was done. We took a lot of notes and listened and tried to fashion answers out of what people were asking for. So that's why there's not 200 people here objecting. The process has worked.
Kevin.
A long time ago, we had a very bad rains, and that cemetery's up on a hill.
Yeah.
And the bodies came out, coffin, his body, bones, everything came out, into the street, into the people's yard. So it's like, it wouldn't be a great idea to build right there, anyway.
Come, Kevin?
Hello, Kevin Osby, 36, 30, Riverview Terrace, Needles, California. I'm not sure if this is the time. I haven't been able to make the other study meetings. It seems like they always just hit on a terrible time. I was out of town, whatever. And I'm going to be missing the Planning Commission meeting tomorrow, I'm having surgery. So it just, this was the time that I wanted to bring something up. My family owns two commercial buildings down on Front Street, and we have munchies restaurants, they're our only tenant. They're 100-plus-year-old buildings, been there forever. They've been restaurants, bars, 100 years ago, I think there was a car dealership. And over the years, we've been talking to numerous businesses. Nobody will even talk to us because there is absolutely no parking. And I just wanted this to be brought up a little bit, because I know it's been talked about there may be something that we can do. Right now, we have, the road is 48 feet wide from our side on Front. And we do have, that sidewalk there is 10 foot 3 inches. So it's, you know, very wide. I mean, that's nice, I mean, if it's being used, but munchies is complaining all the time, because whenever, you know, I love St. Vincent de Paul, and I love the railroad across, but they both take over that parking a lot of times. And I've got one little business there, then I'm getting very little rent because they're hard workers, I love the people, and I want to keep them there. But I can't, nobody will even look at anything on those other two buildings until we could do something with partner parking. Now, I don't see there's anything we can do on the other side, because obviously, that's BNSF parking. But to me, there are two things that could be done. The one I don't feel is the best is that sidewalk could be pulled in, and then we could do diagonal, just like we do right around the corner as you're coming down. I think it's F Street. That could continue around. That would triple the parking, because the parking is made, this is hilarious, but, because I'm there all the time, moving stuff in, moving out, talking to munchies. People can't parallel park anymore. I don't know if they're just not being, and now we've got big trucks. When these buildings were built, I have a picture, you had little trucks that were, you know, in little cars. Well, when you parallel park a big truck, they're taking up 30 feet. And if you did parallel, I mean, if you did slanted parking, diagonal parking, sorry, that would give us three times or better. And it's safer, too, for people that are in wheelchairs and things. That's not even a safe place. And I thought I, you know, just because of the parking that Lucy's has, now that they've closed, I've been afraid I'm going to even lose munchies. I haven't. But I don't know what else to do. I would love to do something with those buildings. Now, it's, and it's been for years, just storage. I originally purchased them when I thought that El Garza's was back at that time.
Right.
Things were different, and it was going to be a hotel restaurant. Well, the funds couldn't be used for that, and that's, you know, that's neither here nor there. But I have those buildings, and unless somehow we could increase that parking, and I think by, the better situation would be doing one way. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comment? We're closed for a public comment. Was this discussion, do we need? It was just discussion?
Appropriate action would be if they, if any of the counselors want to provide specific guidance to have the consultant about, now, I can answer one is, we will look at the geometry and whether angled parking would work.
But didn't, didn't we already, we already did that? We had an engineering review.
Yeah, it sounded familiar.
We did, when we did the diagonal for the other side. Yeah.
I had a concern, because I was at, I've been to all the meetings and the downtown section. I thought it was going to be, I see it cuts off at E Street. I thought it was going to be H Street to D Street, because D Street encompasses the old Claypool's Building, which is Art Deco, plus the Catholic Church, which is our oldest building in town, that I'm concerned about that whole block being preserved, that, especially that one, because I thought we had discussed H Street to D Street.
Okay, will H Street to...
To D Street. Because D Street would include like the old Irene's Corner, all of that.
We'll bring that up as Planning Commission tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Back to what Tana had just said, I thought we did do a study, and it was going to be okay to do, was it not?
Not okay. It's not wide enough. But he brought up a good point about, I mean, the sidewalk is, was not, that was not taken out the sidewalk. But he did also maybe one way.
One way was that if we took out parallel parking on the, on the...
On the railroad side. That was not brought up.
So we'll, we'll take a look at it, yeah. And if the work's already done, we'll just pull out those studies and take a look at it.
I would like us to consider looking into the possibility of, like, with Williams. Williams has two one-way streets, very busy downtown, lots of stores, hundreds of thousands of people all the time, and you go down one way, and it would be like Broadway and Front Street. But Front Street could be a one-way street with parallel parking. And it might be something to consider, because that's been a big problem down there.
We'll take a look.
It's something to look at.
Mission meeting. Okay.
If there are any other, certainly, feel free to, you know, contact Patrick or I, you know, in the next couple days, and we can, we can have this analysis done. Paul has done a good job in trying to make this work. But... But it'll be coming back to you. In probably in a month in its final form for enactment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Public hearing notice to consider all evidence and testimony for against amending chapter eight finance article two, section eight to nine purchasing staff report.
Yes. Right now, the municipal code. That's policies, it sets. Allows informal bids on purchases up to fifteen thousand dollars. And and then it requires a formal bid for everything above fifteen thousand dollars. Now. Within the differences, an informal bid is we figure out what we need to buy, trace them. And that has to be able to handle so many blocks and all that. And then informal allows us to call known vendors and get quotes and then move forward on the lowest cost. So we come. Formal bid requires us to not only do the first part, but then put it in the newspaper. And at least once and then have it out there in the public for thirty to forty five days. And then people formally respond and then we pick the little bit. So as things have this, this fifteen thousand was probably set in the in the seventies or eights. And what we're finding now is things like transformers cost fifty, sixty thousand dollars. So for us to just buy one, we have to go through this elongated formal bid process. Whereas we can assure buying the lowest cost product by doing the. The informal bid process. So what we are asking for is that the fifteen thousand be increased to one hundred thousand. For purchases of materials and supplies only, not for construction contracts. Because by state law, those do have to go to formal bid. So but it would be hundred thousand only when the council has included that amount in the budget. So you will have approved, well, use an example, six hundred thousand dollars for polls, poll requests. Okay, so we would not be able to, we would only be able to expand through the informal process. Where the council had approved the funding specifically in the budget. So we think this is an expedite way. We all purchases show up on your council agenda as part of the warrants. I would draw attention to those. We're just trying to expedite, but yet protect that we are purchasing at the lowest possible cost. So our recommendation is for budgeted items for materials and supplies only for the utilities and public works. Where a big expenditure, big ticket items are, with that be increased to one hundred. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions by council? Any public comments regarding this? If not, public comments are closed.
Move to approve.
A motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, that's okay. Called order?
Member Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pogue?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
Consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The mayor or any member of the city council may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to council action, a member of the public may address the city council on matters scheduled on the consent calendar. Three minute time limit per person applies. I would like to pull number eleven for discussion and approve the warrants eight through ten and twelve through fifteen.
I will so move.
Second?
I second.
Okay. Um, do we?
Or do we have to move motion?
Okay, public comment? My my concern. Okay, vote, call for the vote. Okay.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yeah.
Pogue?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
My concern regarding the skate park, I looked at the drawings and that I have a couple of concerns. First about the cost, if it's tagged. Is there any way they're going to come back and help us repair it, keep it up, maintain it? And then my other concern is first. The use of spike is a copyrighted animal. And then also I don't approve of using the needles wagon as like a dumping basket for skateboards. We we are working very hard. That's on our Route sixty six for that image of needles. And I I'm not in favor of the wagon spike. And then also the Route sixty six emblem should be to the Route sixty six emblem. We are on Route sixty six. We're really proud of it. And I don't want those three as a caricature on a skate park. That's my concern. You guys want to answer that or?
Let me give you context. The city council approved up to fifteen thousand dollars for the the mural project. The we have had a lot of problems with the that blank concrete getting graffiti with not loopings. And so we began to work on an overall way to improve the skate park. One was LED lighting that's been added there. And then the LED lighting for Duke Watkins flight or soccer field, like football field. That's also including LED lighting. We also put in what the sheriffs called prosecutable quality. Security cameras. So if somebody is misbehaving there, we'll be able to track it much better. And there's pretty good coverage out there. We've had trees donated. We're gonna add seating up there around the skate park. Because we could very well see skating events that happen. And then we're gonna do some concrete repair. I mean, it's just where concrete's just checked and, you know, nothing's bigger than a beam, but there's some some holes. So we put this out a little bit. And these two gentlemen responded with examples of their artwork. And I don't think there's specific proposals for this. So but I'll let them, I'll let them talk to it. But they the they would benefit from the guidance the council could have about find another way to portray the wagon. Find a way, we probably unless you get copyright approval by the Schultz family, you're not gonna be able to use spike. You know, personally, I don't like skulls, but, you know, I'm not, I'm not seventeen, eighteen years old on a skateboard. Very good indications. I love the bear, lizard. The Route sixty six can be made less of a.
Seems like too, there's a lot of blank spots that offer itself to somebody tagging on that.
Yeah, we wanted.
Unless it's like a three E, you've got multiple colors, you know, layer on top of that.
So one of the things about art. Is we all have a different vision of.
Right, exactly.
But they would benefit from your input to them about what you all want to see and what you all don't want. Because these are talented artists. That will make sure that we're happy customers.
Right.
And and if the council approves moving ahead with this contract. We will bring back to you the specifics on the art. Renderings to make sure that they have complied with their wishes all. But what I would like to be able to do is by Friday, they need half of the money to be able to go buy supplies. Because if there's a lead time on paint supplies. And then they could finish off their proposed artwork. We can bring it to you and we can get them underway before we hit the hot season. So I'd love to see these guys doing work before the end of March. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions for.
I just had the concerns I mentioned, and I know you are targeting a cer- certain age market. You know, that has different visions than what, you know, like a Route sixty six wagon and stuff would be. And I I would hope you would adhere to that, but, you know, also keep in mind, you know, what we want. It's a public city park too, so.
So they wanted to keep it tasteful and and busy to 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 speak on the on the to hide graffiti. We have multiple colors on top of each other. So if you did mark on it, it would be harder to see.
Yeah.
I'm a little nervous.
I mean, that was just that was just a concern and stuff, so.
No, go ahead.
Wagon, I was if I offended anybody, I came up with that design. It wasn't like to dump skateboards. It was more of like a carriage and trying to implement the wagon. Because I noticed that it was a big deal here, you know, like, yeah, so I wasn't trying to offend anybody or anything like that. It was just a way that I thought would be cool, especially like skateboarding culture, you know. That was really just the incentive is that, but as far as the wagon. And then we definitely, anything as far as the Schultz character, we would definitely look into that and try to get approval before we did it. We just thought it'd be really cool to incorporate it, especially because we've seen in it throughout a lot of murals throughout the town as well.
Right.
We have to stop.
Okay.
No, I mean, I, these are great. I mean, these completely get are appropriate for the appropriate age that you're looking for. I mean, I love the Route sixty six. I love the wagon. I mean, I mean, Spike could always be a definitely issue financial, but so I'm a. This, I mean, my kids would love this. So I definitely, these are great drawings. So I'm very excited to see what you guys are looking forward to actually put on.
I'm actually kind of an old fart. I like I like cactuses and tumbleweeds and and spike and road runners.
We're definitely open to suggestions. We definitely knew the original sketch was just to get this started and if you guys had any other suggestions.
These are great.
I really love your tortoise and like the idea of a tumbleweed or something. Those are really some great ideas to incorporate. I I you guys do good work.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
I do have something. I'm I'm super excited as a mom, one of a son, but, you know, I'm even though I'm old, I'm not that old. And I remember hanging out the skate park when I was younger. So I I just want to make sure everyone knows, like, the skate park was put in for a certain demographic. Even though it is a public park, so in order to. Utilize the money that was put into that park already, we have to make sure we keep going towards that demographic for the kids. And this is the stuff that the skaters.
Yes.
I know that. So I mean, I I do think some people might look at this and find it eh, but it's really not.
It's really not.
Not for them, and that would also will deter them from wanting to mark upon it even more.
That was definitely our approach.
I'm definitely digging stuff like this to go with the sign. So good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I personally love the skull.
Yes.
I liked you doing the sentence, swear to. But this is not a dead body skull. This is a totally different. I'm sorry. I do like it. I have it in my house.
We're also aware that Tony Hawk funded the skate park and that is the direction with the skulls as well, especially with the Hawk skull. So that's the huge approach with that as well.
That's a great problem.
Thank you. Yes. Yeah, I was just gonna ask that. Is Tony Hawk incorporated in that?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, and I think all your work is great. All all of us great. It'd be nice if you could could get the permission from this from Spike from the.
Question, the spray can here, is that part of your, does that go on the mural?
So. Yeah, so that is directly from the skateboarding game that Tony Hawk created. That's original, the spray can, but the other pieces are all incorporated through the game, which I'm sure all the kids that are skating there all are aware of that. It's really just to kind of play into that, but it does not have to go in there and could encourage tagging possibly.
I know. We've had tremendous tagging there. So it's if you can leave the skate, I mean, the spray can off.
Yeah, of course. Yeah.
Maybe you can invite Tony Hawk.
Yes. Really open.
Great on the logo of Tony Hawk. If you could get him to allow you to paint his signature.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have him come and painted.
So do we, do we make a motion?
Yeah. Yeah, once once public comment's over.
Okay.
If you make the motion.
Staff, your honor, hello, Zachary Long, fifteen nineteen, Front Street. Kyle and Gabe are actually locals, as local can be. They both reside in Blythe. Painted multiple businesses in that area, so they're ready to paint in the heat. I don't see them having a problem coming up and fixing anything. It's a ninety minute drive, so. I've seen a lot of their work. I've been in buildings where their work is covering every inch of the building A one, so. They're for my sure pick. I'm nervous up at this too.
Not a trip to be nervous right here. Ah, no, yeah, I hope. But I just wanted to say that this isn't gonna be some painters that are gonna come and paint the town and run away with the payment. They're locals, they're young, they're they're in their area forever.
Okay.
That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're in the process of putting together an art guild here in Needles right now. And this is gonna be really exciting and bringing into the plans for that.
Thank you.
Excited as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor Mayor. If the council is so inclined, then I've taken notes on your concerns. I will meet with them later than Friday. I will get their their concepts further developed and I will distribute those to you to make sure that your wishes are carried out, so.
Okay.
We'll we'll try and get them started.
Okay.
I will move to approve.
There's still one more for public comment.
Up there. Thanks guys.
I didn't want to.
Jared Johnson, thirteen twenty, Santa Fe Circle. I just wanted to jump on what they were saying. The the Tony Hawk thing, his skull emblem is in a lot of what he does. That's his trademark, his look. So it's not a bad thing. It represents his company, his corporation, and what he does for building these parks for a lot of these kids. Riverside had an issue with tagging. I'm not proposing we do this, but they put up a wall where you're allowed to tag on it. Kept a lot of the tagging away from their areas. There's also kind of an unwritten deal amongst people when there's a mural, they try not to tag it because that's another artist's deal. Incorporating this city park. With its history, I think is kind of important. So the Route sixty six, the chief train, the spike. Which I believe is owned by Joe Jones, if I'm not mistaken. I remember. Yeah, so. And then incorporating that into our city park that when people skate there. They might even ask what it is or where it is or what's going on, or people from here could tell them what it is. So it brings the history into our park. I don't think it's disrespectful that they're skating on something that's at a city park representing the city, saying this is our city park. And in other games, I know that three D renditions have been made and added to the game. So if you want to skate in the game, you can skate in different places. So it's kind of cool that if that were to happen, you'd be in the game. So that's one thing that could come out of this if it is actually a really nice, you know, deal. And I'm sure if it does get tagged by somebody or whatever, that there's probably a hundred people in town that would be willing to put up the twenty five bucks for paint for them to come out and do it. I was just concerned also that whatever paint they're using is not slick and cause more issues. So I'm sure they know what kind of paint to use, but that was the only question I had. Alright, thank you. I'm I'm for it, by the way.
Yeah.
I just have one quick question, one quick question. You were talking about the Tony Hawk drawings. I mean, we can use all of those carte blanche without any copyright or legal issues?
Mr. Hawk.
Is that part of the fifteen thousand then? Is that part of the fifteen thousand then?
That's their problem. That's their
Oh, you're gonna take care of it.
I'm actually gonna contact the Tony Hawk Foundation to see if they would come out when we're finished. So I will make sure there's no copyright issue.
Oh, that'll be addressed. Okay, thank you. There's no other public comments on this. It's closed. Are we gonna
I just wanted to remind everybody it's one person, three minutes each.
Okay.
I second that, Ellen.
Thank you.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
The Corkle?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Feld?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Regular items, public comments pertaining to the council items, a three-minute time limit per person has been established. Destination sixty-six mixed-use development agreement and option update between the city and the asset ministry and for property generally located the northwest corner of West Broadway and G Street. APNs oh one eight six dash oh nine five dash oh four dash zero 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 and oh one eight six dash oh nine five dash oh three dash zero zero zero. Staff report.
Yes, honorable members of the council, hello again. In front of you, we have Destination sixty-six. So there was a settlement agreement. The city had gone out to RFP in mid two thousand nineteen. We had one bidder come back to and, and provide a purchase price of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. We did enter into an agreement with them and we did sell the property. That agreement had a contention that within twelve months, there would be construction to start. And so when that did not happen, the, the property owner came back to the city and proposed that an addendum be, be created because of the COVID. COVID slowed down the development process and it didn't allow them to complete the development that they proposed in their RFP. And so basically, the settlement agreement had, working with the city attorney and Mr. Daniels, we, we created some timelines and deadlines as to the requirements of the development. And so within forty-five days, they had to come meet with city staff, which they did. Within a hundred and five days, they had to submit a zoning permit application, site plan interview, which they're in the middle of right now, but they did submit that. Complete the, within two hundred and eighty-five days, a CUP permit and a, for the project itself. And so, and the general plan update. So as you know, the council had decided that we weren't gonna see any zone changes or general plan updates. So basically, that general plan update is part of the update that you saw earlier tonight. So we incorporated that. So more or less, that was a waived condition because it was implemented in the general plan. The council decided that they weren't gonna see any more of those changes until the general plan was completed. And then finally, within a hundred and eighty, a hundred and thirty days, May sixth, twenty twenty-three, that a certificate of occupancy be provided for the building. So what that means is at the end of the development, you've gone through all the inspections and the approvals of fire. And you, you basically are allowed to occupy the building. And so within a couple of months, they'd be required to open up their building. And obviously, since they haven't started construction, that would be difficult. So we were, on January fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, we received the letter that's in your packet today from Mr. Menajian requesting that an extension take place for the project. So what we wanted to do was invite the developer down. So you could ask all the questions that you wanna ask. We're not asking for a determination tonight. We will do that at a later date in executive session. But right now, we wanted to bring the developer in front of you so you could ask all the questions there are. Well, I'll let them, I'll let them speak. I don't wanna take away all their thunder. So come on up. Do you have that project?
Good evening. Dear Madam Mayor and honorable members of the council, I represent Mr. Menasian and speak on his and his development team's behalf, asking you for extension to be granted for the Destination sixty-six mixed-use development. As you know, this council granted us the right to develop this project with onsite three-story parking structure back in April of two thousand nineteen. Within the year, everything had changed due to the COVID and the impacts of a COVID for, I mean, for a two-year long pandemic. Costs for the construction began to increase as supply chain issues impacted the availability of the building materials and the workers for the project. Our project was no exception. These events that were out of our control may have actually presented an opportunity to bring a project back to you for consideration that would not only increase the number of housing units on the side, but also reduce the construction cost of the project. During the two community workshop held by the city of Needles Housing, residents all stated that they saw the following as an important challenge to housing in Needles. One was substandard quality of the homes. The inability to purchase a home in the city, lack of access for nearby grocery stores, not enough available housing, I guess shortage of housing. And employment concerns, difficulty finding and hiring teachers at Needles School due to unavailability of the affordable, desirable housing within the city. And most people who have jobs in Needles were, were and are moving to Arizona. Our project will help address these issues and we are excited to work with you to complete the revised project if you grant us the extension. Our project will go from seventy-four units presented in the original proposal to hundred and thirty-eight units in the revised version while still maintaining the twenty-three thousand square feet of a retail space and twenty-four thousand of a open, common open space. I'll go over the plans with you. The proposed units will also include a mix of bedroom types to attract different family types and household sizes. The Southern California Association of Governments has predicted that the population of the Needles will grow by over a thousand residents, exceeding six thousand individuals by the year of two thousand thirty-five. Our proposed project nearby doubles the number of residential units in the proposed location. Also, our proposed project will bring much needed housing with the ground level retail space for shops, restaurants, takeout food, services, groceries, store, and other amenities to serve the general public. We expect our project to be an anchor for the city and usher the additional new developments as well as keep the residents local versus moving to nearby Arizona for housing. According to the housing element study prepared by the city and the Southern California Association of Government Study of the housing needs assessment for the city of Needles, the city must provide eighty-seven new units of housing in the coming nine years to meet the current demand. The proposed project will consist of hundred and thirty-eight units, will satisfy the need of high quality and engaging development that will become the point of pride for the city. I hope that you will see the potential in the Needles that we see and we want to invest in this community to make it more vibrant, exciting, and keep up with the demands and needs of the growing community. I'm here to introduce the project. These are preliminary designs that we did. Original design was designed in such a way that it had three-story parking structure, which was the, the cost of building a concrete structure is tremendous. The, the cost would be roughly about ten million dollars to do the, just merely the concrete structure. So since the land values are less expensive, we decided to purchase the land next door and we're in negotiation. Hypothetically, if it is not available, then we'll go semi-subtranean parking. And we will do the project to finish it up, but we're in a process of negotiating with the people to purchase to provide surface parking. But meanwhile, we also, can we go to the next page? Can you go one more, please? This is the alternate design to provide subtranean parking, semi-subtranean, which is roughly about hundred and fourteen parking spaces. Exactly the same size of the lot next door that we tried to negotiate to purchase. So if that doesn't go through, we can provide hundred and fourteen parking spaces. And then this design, if you go to the next you see the green shaded area, that's roughly about twenty-four thousand square feet of a common outdoor space. We try to provide for the retail people, let's say groceries and, it's like a mini park. So the people could use that as an area of sitting and enjoying the thing. But behind it toward the railroad is additional, I think it's fifty-six parking spaces. I have to make sure. But we provide surface parking for handicap people and we have to require to provide those. And the rest, the yellow area is just gonna be the retail use. Next, please. Now, what we done is that we designed the building in order to meet the building code requirements and bring the construction costs down. The building code requires certain type of construction. We divided the building into two parts. They're separated by each other. You see that pink section? So that would allow us to building to be type five construction, which is tremendous cost reduction rather than making it a concrete structure. So it will be all wood structure. So that cost will go down drastically. So, and it's repetitive, the second floor, third floor, and the fourth floor. So it's gonna be a four-story park development with, as I said, roughly about hundred and thirty-eight units rather than then seventy-two, seventy-two units or seventy-four units that was approved. So that's basically the reason that we tried to modify, tried to justify the construction cost and then the economic portion of the construction to develop this project. If you have any questions or
I have questions. Yeah, I have, right. I have questions.
How, what do you guys, how long are you guys thinking on this?
Well, this project?
Yeah.
We started, this was like maybe about, it took us about four months to five months to develop at this stage. But there were some other issues that we had to deal with the fire department, county fire department, and the building department. But the previous project didn't meet that requirement. So we had to modify it. And, and we put the numbers together in order to construct. It's, for us, it's just viable to have more units rather than less units because the construction cost was higher. That's the main reason that we had to do this.
I have a question. So you're saying it's gonna be wood and then so the outside is stucco or wood?
The retail aspects of it, the retail portion will have a situation between residential and anything.
Okay.
For a reduction of the noise and rated, but it's gonna be fully sprinkled with three, four elevators. And we tried to separate the residential units for security purposes to park different location rather than the public.
Good.
Yeah, a question for you on that. The time of the start on that, would it be this year in two thousand twenty-three?
No, I, I'm very, no, it wouldn't be. I mean, we will start modifying, we submit it. I think it's gonna take us about nine months to get the permits.
Okay.
And then starting within a year, we will do the construction.
Within a year of that nine months. So we're looking at two years?
Yes, sir.
Just to start?
No, 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 nine months to get the permits processing to the different agencies because it's not only the city zoning.
It would be the land breaking.
Land breaking, we, we believe maximum about a year.
Maximum of a year. So if we give you an extension to a year and if you didn't abide by it, then
If you're fine, we just wanna proceed with the project.
Okay, just a question. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
So you would, right now with the permits, are you already done with design?
We're basically done with the design. We might
Go to the drawing board. You're ready. You just need the permitting process.
We need, we're ready. We have to, a little bit of a twitch to this thing to make sure that we've submitted to the planning. I mean, proceed with the planning and see if they have any comments.
So would you be breaking ground in two thousand twenty-three or will be right after the new year?
After the new year.
So in the beginning.
Let's say, let's say next year, March, we'll have everything.
When do you, what is your, I mean, I'm not gonna, I'm not holding your feet to the fire. Lots of things can happen. But what is your estimate to completion?
Estimate, it will usually take this type of project. If we don't go subtranean parking, if we be able to purchase the land across the street, the construction will take about a year. If we go subtranean, it will take more.
Call for the, um, do you have one more question?
Um, just to kind of piggyback off that. So you're already pretty much done with the design plans. Have you already kind of settled on all of your bids through your construction companies and your materials so that you know that there's not a supply issue?
This is just the preliminary design that we've done.
Okay.
We have to submit to the planning department and see if they have any comments. As soon as they approve it, then we'll do the structural design of it and then we'll submit it to different agencies. Because you have to consider the fact that we have to provide power. We have to make sure the electrical department is, there's sufficient power in there. You have to deal with the state handicap requirements because state law requires us to meet the AD and local state requirements. So all these units are being built are handicap accessible.